Thank you for joining us tonight at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started.
We have some.
I hope you can all hear that.
He's testing those new speakers, sir.
That's great stuff. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Tiam.
Johnston.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Benon.
Here.
Black.
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Reverend Jim Jones, Blazing Grace Church.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the great God who has given us this nation, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for having me. Just as we go into this time, this season, I just would like if we would reflect to what the season is all about instead of the shopping and the hustle and bustle. Isaiah 6 says, "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and he will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace." And as we go into this time, I would encourage all of us to look at that verse and look at those names and then ponder on each name and what it is. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this time today. Thank you for the counsel that we have and for the decisions they make each and every day. Be with them more, God, in their decision-making. Watch over them as they are out in the public, keeping them safe. And Father, I thank you for this city. This city that is growing and this city that has been home to many people. I just ask that you would just continue to watch over all those that are here in this place. Lord, this is a great city and it's been made that way by the people that live here and the people that help run it, but we know that ultimately you run it. So I would just ask, Lord God, that you would be with the decisions that are made tonight and that they would be pleasing unto you. And I ask, Father, that you bless this place and that you cover it with your angels, keeping all of our officers and council and all the people that work and run this city safe. We thank you for that. We give you all the glory, all the honor and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the work session of November 8, 2018. The following meetings held November 15, 2018, council liaison work session clarification, executive session, special city council meeting, grant application for Carlson Street Bridge clarification meeting, and regular city council meeting. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of November 2018. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the payroll and material claims report for the month of November. Payroll and material claims totaled $6,944,557. Payroll-related claims, $5,073,707. This represents a three payroll month that occurs twice each year with a bi-weekly payroll system. We had 684 employees at the end of the month. We had changes in filled positions, an increase in one full-time status, increase of one in the half-time status, and a decrease of six in the part-time status, for an overall decrease of six filled positions. Large vendor claims, I've highlighted Morton &amp; Company. This is for our workers' comp policy consulting and bond, $119,836. This report explains 77.88 percent of all vendor claims, which I've listed for your review. On the back of the report, I present November purchase card activity. We had 1,343 transactions for the month totaling $359,744 and 163 cardholders used their cards. Six purchase agents had monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This concludes my report.
Council, do you have any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We're going to see civil service commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Daniel Lenahan to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, replacing Pete Black, whose term expired. Mr. Lenahan's term will begin December 7, 2018, and will expire December 7, 2024. D, community development block grant advisory committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Callie Nielsen to serve as a member of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Advisory Committee, replacing Annette Simmons, who resigned. Ms. Nielsen's term will begin December 7, 2018, and will expire January 21, 2021. E, Japanese Sister City Subcommittee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Richard Harmon to continue his service as a member of the Japanese Sister City Subcommittee. Mr. Harmon's term will begin December 8, 2018, and will expire December 8, 2022. F, amended council decision, the crossings division one. Council may wish to adopt this decision amending the final plat for crossings division one, subdividing approximately 37.31 acres of land into, from 97 lots with seven unbuildable lots to 74 lots with two lots being unbuildable. Subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Benon.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, communication and proclamations. We do have one proclamation, but before we get to that, we have some scouts in the audience. Who's in charge back there? Not you. You're not in charge. There you go. Thank you.
No, we got the guy on the end raised his hand, the one that, you're it?
He's the Assistant C. and Patrol.
He just wanted to speak. Okay, go ahead. Yes, sir. Where are you from?
Poquetello, Idaho.
What troop?
Troop 304.
Troop 304. Fantastic. Thank you for being with us tonight. Appreciate that. We do have one proclamation to be read that was Veterans Suicide Awareness Month proclamation to be read by Councilmember Bina Benon.
Whereas according to the most recent U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs study, approximately 20 veterans die by suicide every day in the United States, and whereas veterans face a disproportionate risk of suicide when compared to the general population, and whereas the highest risk for suicide is among younger veterans, especially those who served on the battlefields of Iraq and Afghanistan, and whereas the risk of suicide can be reduced through awareness, proper education, resources, and treatment, and whereas suicide affects each and every one of us in some way, and it is up to us to help those we love by being good neighbors, good friends, and good family members if we are to protect our veterans from such a tragic fate. Now therefore, Brian C. Vlad, Mayor of the city of Poquetello, does hereby proclaim the month of December to be Veterans Suicide Awareness Month in Poquetello and urges the citizens of Poquetello to recognize how serious suicide is and the steps each of us can take to protect those around us from such tragedy.
Thank you. I'd be happy to hear from you. A few words if you'd like to.
First, I'd like to thank the city council for this proclamation. Veteran suicide is an extremely critical thing that we work on every day. We have more than 20 veterans commit suicide every day in the United States. It's something that we work on to try to communicate with these folks and work with them through the programs such as the Veterans Corps here in the 6th District. I'd also like to thank the city of Poquetello for all of their support for things like the Field of Heroes, the American Legion Post 4, which has been around for now 99 years. We will be celebrating our 100th year next year. So, thank you very much for all you do.
Woody, would you tell everybody who you are and what your positions are?
Okay, I'm George Woody Woodman. I am the immediate past State Commander for the Department of Idaho American Legion, and I am currently still involved in the post here. I'm the financial officer and I do a number of other things just to help out veterans anywhere we can. And if you have any veterans that need to speak to somebody, we do a coffee at the building every Tuesday and Thursday from 9:00 to noon. It's a great time for them to get in there and find out there's other people in the same situation as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number five, calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On December 11, at 1:30 p.m. will be an executive session. December 13, at 9:00 a.m. will be a work session. December 20, at 1:30 p.m. will be an executive session. At 3:00 p.m., council liaison work session clarification meeting. 5:30 p.m., agenda clarification meeting. At 6:00 p.m., regular council meeting. On December 8, Wild Winter Weekends at Zoo Idaho from noon to 4:00 p.m. December 13 and 14, Poquetello Regional Transit, 31st Annual Holiday Light Store. Tickets are available at the transit office. I might just add, if you want to go on Friday, you're too late. It has been sold out. If you want to go on Thursday, be the next, one of the next 50 callers and you'll get that ticket, but there's only 50 tickets left for that, and so I would encourage you to get going. Then, let's see, the Marshall Library has shortened service hours in December. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Regular hours will return on January 2. Community Recreation Center will be closed on the following dates for the holidays, December 25, Christmas Day, and January 1, New Year's Day.
Do we have an early closing on the evenings of those things?
City Hall will be closing at 3:00, I believe, but I don't know if the other buildings are.
John might be able to tell us.
Yes, 3:00 p.m.
3:00 p.m. Thank you.
So yes, the answer to that's yes.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
We're on top of things here.
Or at least John.
John's got it figured out. All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number six, public hearing fiscal year 2019, FTA ITD 5310 grant application transit. This time it's been set aside for council to receive comments from the public regarding approval of the following grant assistant projects for public transit, Poquetello Public Transit. A, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, grant 5310 application in the amount of $25,000 for fiscal year 2019, and the local share will be split between urban, $3,125, and rural, $3,125. And B, authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the grant and authorize the public transit director to make necessary amendments and modifications related to the grant, subject to legal department review. Banning Transportation Planning Organization will provide $2,500 of the urban program to share the transits, and transit heads funding available for fiscal year 2019 budget to support the remaining $625. No city funds will be used for the rural program share. Which one am I doing? I declare the public hearing open.
Mayor, city council, good evening. My name is Skylar Beebe. I'm the Public Transit Director and ADA Coordinator for the city of Poquetello. This application, as mentioned by the mayor, is a Federal Transit Administration 5310 grant, and it's specifically for mobility management. Mobility services, support services are required by Title VI and the Civil Rights Act and are really important to our department in the success of increasing information and improving transportation services. Mobility management provides crucial coordination among current and prospective organizational partners, public outreach related to changes in service, and other planning activities, marketing and promotion of services, meeting coordination, meeting facilitation, and other professional management activities related to the provision and expansion of services. As the mayor mentioned, of the 25,000, the urban share is 3,125. The BPTO is covering $2,500 of that, and so it'll only be $625 the department will come up with that we have. And of course, no city funds will be used for the rural program. That concludes my presentation. Any questions or comments for me?
Questions for Skylar, council? Before you leave, have there been any correspondence by email or mail?
No, we have had no correspondence.
Okay, have we had any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, I don't think that you have anything to rebut, so we're just going to go to close it. I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides as you show you how you wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the grant application for transit. We understand the allocations between urban and rural, and that we authorize the mayors to sign the documents related to the grant and authorize the public transit director to make the necessary amendments and modifications related to the grant, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Benon.
Yes.
Thank you. We've moved to agenda item number seven, protest consideration request regarding the bid acceptance and procurement agreement for a snowplow blower airport. Council may wish to consider the protest by Kodiak America LLC regarding their submitted bid for the purchase of a snow removal equipment. It is staff's recommendation that council affirm its prior determination regarding the bids for a snowplow blower for the Poquetello Regional Airport, as voted upon in the regular council meeting held September 6, 2018, declaring Oskos Products LLC to be the lowest responsive bidder. A, accept the lowest responsive bid for Oskos Airport Products LLC in the amount of $649,267. A bid from Kodiak America LLC was submitted in the amount of $561,278 and was deemed unresponsive as it did not meet the technical requirements of the specifications. A protest from Kodiak was received and reviewed by staff after thoroughly reviewing the awarding, review, awarding the bid to Oskos is still recommended. If the bid is accepted, B, authorize the execution of procurement agreement and notice of award between the city of Poquetello and Oskos Airport Products LLC in the amount of $649,267, subject to legal department review. The purchase will be funded 93.75 percent by FAA grant funds and 6.25 percent by Airport Passenger Facility Charge, PFC, funds. The purchase is contingent upon the award of grant funds, the FAA, and FAA approval. Do we have anybody here from Kodiak? All right. So we would like to have you come up here, please, one of you, come up and kind of state your case for us. What we'll do is have you state your case, and then we're going to have staff. In fact, I believe we're going to have Nathan, our engineer, come and present, and then we're going to give you the last word to rebut anything that's there so that you can, we can make an educated decision here, so. What was your name if you state your name and for the audience?
Thank you for allowing us to come. My name is Brett Pilling. We're, I represent Kodiak America LLC in Burley, Idaho, and I'm the owner of Kodiak Really, it's, I can probably sum it up pretty quickly. You know, we did the project and we're the lowest bidder. We were rejected originally because of a concern about the engine having too much power for the transmission. It was the only item that was sent to us from, from the city saying why we didn't meet the technical requirements. And since then, we've provided some documentation. You should have it. If not, I have copies. I have it here. You can have it. Both from the engine supplier, Cascade Engine Center, and also from Eaton Corporation, with engineering approval approving the engine and the transmission as a package. We understand that original concern was that the transmission wasn't rated high enough when looking at the published transmission data. But we, we've been doing this for over 50 years as a company, and these transmissions, we have over 100 of these transmissions out with engines that produce more horsepower than this engine does, and we have received previous special approval for our application from the engineering from Eaton Corporation. So according to the documentation that we have since submitted to clarify, there's no technical reason why we don't meet the specification. We're located an hour away. We build a very good snow blower. We have them on airports all over the world. I think Africa and Australia, Australia are the only continents which we don't have airport runway snow blowers, so we build a good blower. We're an hour away. We're the low bid, and we meet technical requirements. And maybe this isn't fair, but after our presentation, our company is 100% owned by a service-connected disabled veteran, and so in the spirit of that, we have lots of positive reasons why we think we should be awarded the contract. There's no other reason that we've been given why we shouldn't be given that award. I guess, well, that's all I have to say at this point. You know, there's a process with the FAA for grant approval, which maybe I'll speak to afterwards if I need to, but just a brief statement. This has happened, you know, in the past where there's been these kind of protests and stuff, and the FAA has specific guidelines that it will and will not fund, and this kind of situation, it's been our experience that they do not fund projects where the lowest bidder that meets technical requirements isn't given the award, so. But hopefully it doesn't get to that point. Do you have a copy of our, of the letter from Eaton Transmissions and from the Cascade Engine? Showing that?
It's in the, we've got it in the attachment.
Okay, you have it. Okay, great. And just so you know, the machines have a full one-year warranty. If anything happens to that transmission, we wouldn't be putting out transmissions that aren't suitable for the engine requirement because then we'd be warranting a lot of transmissions, which we haven't. This transmission is a very good transmission. We've had it far more horsepower, far more torque, and never had a problem with it. Only when we ever had a problem with it is someone added a couple of gears to the transmission without our approval, and that's a problem. But, you know, that's the airport's decision to, if they've ever decided to do that. So I appreciate you hearing our comments and having us here. Do you have any questions?
Let me see if there's any questions for him before he... Okay. We'll have our, have our engineer come up and then we'll have you back.
Sure, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, my name's Nathan Cavalla with TO Engineers. I helped put together procurement, and then I've also been involved in the evaluation of bids and also evaluation of the protest. In our first letter that we sent, the technical requirements that were not met, there were two items that were noted. The first was the clutch, and the second was the transmission provided. So this vehicle actually has two engines, one that actually drives the vehicle and the second one that drives the snow blower. And so our concerns were over the engine that drives the snow blower and the drivetrain that goes along with it. The components being the engine, the clutch, and the transmission did not match. The clutch that was submitted with the bid had a lower torque than the engine allows, and also, excuse me, the transmission as well. In their response to our protest, they listed a different clutch than what was submitted with the bid, and then they also, the initial submittal on the transmission was ambiguous. There are five different transmissions, but none of those were actually indicated on their bid. And so even with their response in the protest, it's a different clutch than what was submitted with the bid, so that's the reason that we continue to find their bid non-responsive.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I wanted to ask about the FAA. Can you say anything about that, about how they will?
Yeah, so, excuse me, we're using the Airport Improvement Program. There's an FAA order that governs how these procurements go, the requirement being that we follow all of the federal rules for procurement when we do this, and we have thus far. That's part of what we're doing today. What the FAA requires is that you have a defined protest procedure, and so after this, what they're going to request is what your protest procedure is, your written protest procedure, and then for us to document that that has been followed. And then prior to awarding to Oskos or sending the award documents, we would get concurrence from the FAA that they will, that they approve the award.
Can you address the idea that we would be unlikely to get the grant if we go with the Oskos bid?
Yeah, so we will ask the FAA specifically if they approve what we're doing before we send the award documents to Oskos.
Any other questions? So I just want to be clear, we've got two engines.
Correct.
The clutch that was originally in the bid did not meet the torque of the engine or the specs.
So what we actually specify is tons per hour, so how much snow that it blows, and there's different ways to meet that. We specified a minimum horsepower for the engine, and then each engine, depending on who the manufacturer is, and depending on what RPM it's running at, has a specific torque that it puts out. So we've, we calculated what the torque was and then looked at the components down the line.
Okay. And you said the initial bid they produced had multiple transmissions, not just one?
Well, it does, it has, okay, so there's two transmissions to start. There's one for each engine. They use an automatic transmission on the carrier vehicle, and then they're using a manual 18-speed transmission for the blower. And so that cut sheet had five different transmissions with varying ranges of torque, and it was never marked or indicated in any way which transmission they were going to provide. Initially, when we reviewed that, the max torque, the max torque you could get out of any of those was 2,250 foot-pounds, and the engine was 2,000, I think, 380. And so initially, that was one of the items we also noted in addition to the clutch. The clutch was actually 1,860 foot-pounds, so it was almost 500 foot-pounds less than the engine. So none of the driveline components lined up. It wasn't, it wasn't clear, and so that was the reasoning.
So it was ambiguousness in the bid?
That as well. They did in their protest clear up which one they were going to provide, which transmission they were.
But that was post-bid.
Correct.
Any other questions for Nathan? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brett?
The only thing that I have to clarify is that's not actually an accurate statement that we provided the wrong clutch in the beginning and they gave a different one. That's not true. It's this, we only have one clutch, one transmission set up for that, and these are the two cut sheets that were provided at the time of the bid, which are the published documentation from Eaton, who provides the transmission and the clutch. We weren't asked to specify which one on each one of these there were. These are all of their transmissions that they run, their, their manual transmissions, and these are all the different clutches. And so when they asked us to clarify, we provided the clarification. It was not a different clutch from the beginning. It's the one that met the spec and that we have the approval from, from Eaton. So I don't know why they didn't understand that at the airport, but, or with the engineering company, but if you look back and look at the facts, it was the same one. That's, that's not a better statement.
So you're telling us that there's multiple selections on there and there wasn't a selection marked on the bid? That's what I'm hearing, is the discrepancy.
Well, they just didn't understand the cut sheets from Eaton on these. We write down what the transmission that we use, and of course, if the transmission's rated at 2,250 foot-pounds of torque, we choose that one there, then we provide the clutch that's 2,250 foot-pounds of torque. Logic doesn't dictate that you would pick a clutch that doesn't match the torque of the transmission, so I don't know. We didn't indicate that it was a lower one. They just...
Logic doesn't dictate that you would pick a clutch that doesn't match the torque of the transmission. So I don't know. We didn't indicate that it was a lower one. They just made that assumption on, on their own, but that's not true. It's matched up with it. You won't find a single Kodiak snow blower with this transmission out there that has the clutch that doesn't match up equally with the transmission. And they just had to, they could have called and clarified, but the specification didn't ask, they asked for the documentation of the cut sheets. We provide these 50 bids a year. We've actually never ran across this question. I've owned the company for 12 years, never had this question put on before. Because it's just an understanding, when you get these cut sheets, you match up which ones they are. The Allison transmission that we provided comes in the same way. You have clear from a 1,500 series Allison transmission up to a 4,600 transmission series, and that's all on it as well, on the Allison transmission which runs the carrier vehicle. So that's all I have to say is that that's not an accurate statement, that we provided two different clutches. We didn't.
You said, yeah, the 1,500 Allison transmission and a what?
Oh, on the, I mean, Allison transmission provides the same sort of cut sheet as Eaton does, where they'll list all of their transmissions on the same page. Instead of doing a separate brochure for every single transmission that they provide, they have the one cut sheet with its rating, its published ratings, all those kinds of things on the list. It's the same thing. And how it works in industrial applications too. These are for everyday use, 500,000 mile transmissions, that, that kind of thing. But Eaton has to look at your each, at your individual application. Just because they're rated like this doesn't even mean we can buy them. We have to submit our entire drivetrain to Eaton, to their engineering team. They go through it and calculate their calculations and either give us an approval or they don't. For instance, like our, the axles that we use, we used to use, have a published rating of 28,000 pounds per axle, but because of our application as a snow blower, they're rated at 37,000 pounds for the axles. And they've come back to us and they give us, this is what our rating is for your application, which we've submitted to them, to you guys specifically for this. Bottom line, it's a really good snow blower, and it's a fantastic transmission that gives operators so much more versatility if you need to move a ton of snow. Because like other people, they just do a single-speed gearbox, and the speed of the snow coming out of the snow blower is just whatever the engine RPM is. But we give you multiple gears, so if you have really deep snow and you've got to get it off, you can shift it into lower gear and you get a lot higher tonnage. And then if you want to throw the snow a long ways, you stick it in a higher gear and you can throw it a long ways. It's, it's really a nice application, and, and it's the reason, I mean, I guess that's a longer story, but there's really not a, a true technical reason not to accept our snow blower. It meets all the technical requirements, and we've had to, you know, get further documentation to show your station.
Do you have a question, Denise? But any other questions?
Well, I had a question, not necessarily. I guess it's maybe for our staff or for our legal department, so.
Okay.
Now, does somebody else have another question for him?
If anybody has a question, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
So my question is, after listening to this, is there a chance that what we asked for was not clearly enough defined, and that would that be a justification for maybe rejecting all bids and putting it back out again with the clear specifications, since they're saying they hadn't been asked for that information before on, on the cut sheets and that wasn't... I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is there a justification for that, or, or do we feel like we weren't clear in our...
So actually, in your packet is the cut sheet that they submitted clearly marked. They actually indicated in, with red boxes on the cut sheet, so I'm, I'm guessing maybe he didn't see what went in with the bid, but it's clearly 1,860 foot-pounds. This is the second one that we got with the protest that indicates a different clutch. But in the bid package, what we scanned in after we, after we received the bid, this is the cut sheet that we had, 1,860 foot-pounds. Here's the protest, 2,250.
I scrolled through all of this, but can you direct me to what page on here it is? Because I don't have, I don't think I have a color of the red on it.
It's only red on the original, the one that...
Okay, so this is the...
This is the one that was submitted with the bid, 1,860.
This is the 1,860.
Okay, I see it here. So is that still the one that you were talking about?
We have no idea why that's marked. We have no idea, but our, our original copy, because we keep copies of them all, does not have a red mark on it. So that mark was not put on by us because we never used that clutch other than the 2,250.
So we still have the original bid package as well. You know, it came printed that way with red on it. It was never marked in any way by, by us or anyone else. So it's what we got with it, and that's what started raising the questions.
This one looks marked by hand.
Greg, that's the one we received with the protest.
And this original one with the red box was done by the computer? Apparently it looks like. They were very steady hands. Okay?
Mayor, I have one follow-up question for Nathan, if I may. Nathan, you mentioned that one of the cut sheets contained either transmission or clutch. I didn't follow quickly enough, that none of them would have met the specifications. Which one was that? Could you explain that again, please?
So in terms of the transmission, initially, there was, the transmission that drives the blower was an 18-speed manual transmission. There were five different options, and none were indicated on there. When we'd initially reviewed them, the torque of the engine exceeded the torque of all of the transmissions. We have since, over the last several months, in correspondence with Eaton, confirmed that they would approve the application of the largest transmission if it were to be provided.
But again, that one had, didn't have any of those five...
It had nothing marked on it.
And Mr. Pillin mentioned that it's not uncommon for them, at least in their bid submittals, to not mark any of those on the cut sheets. Do you have anything to add to that or your perspective on that?
Yeah, I mean, if you looked at the next, like, Oshkosh's bid, it lists every component, every model of transmission, the exact one. So typically, we see, you know, just like on the engine, exactly what the engine is, exactly what the transmission is, each of the components, and make it up.
And did not seeing those marked on there has caused you any problems as you evaluated the bids?
It does in a way when the, you know, when the clutch is only 1,860. I mean, the typical assumption would be, exactly like you said, you'd match up the transmission with the clutch, and you'd pick the transmission that has 1,860 foot-pounds. So there was some ambiguity there.
So this came directly from the original?
Yes.
That you had with that on it?
Yep. We still have the two copies of the bid documents in our possession as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any question, any other questions, council?
Do I get the last word? Sorry.
We mentioned it, and then we called up for a question. Yeah, why don't you come up?
Well, it's just...
Come all the way over here so they can see you at home.
I mean, bottom line is, they, when they clarified, what we required was clarification, which we provided in the protest, showing which transmission would be used. If you do get a Kodiak snow blower, it will have the 2,250 foot-pounds of torque rating. That's the only one we ever use. So why that's marked, I have no idea. We never marked them because it's just a cut sheet directly from their catalog.
Do, do you have a copy of what you submitted?
I don't with me, no. We just brought the, the, well, actually, I don't know if we brought that. All I have is the protest and then the approval letter from Eaton. They're the ones that give the approval, and what we would provide is what's proven, so we can talk about what happened with that original paper. But the bottom line is, that's the clarification from, that we provided. So bottom line is, this, 1,500 or 1,800, whatever it was that he said...
It was 1,860.
1,860. I mean, this is, this, because I have that, that cut sheet, 1,860, and I, this, this is the copy right out of our records, and you can see there's nothing marked on there. We just clarified, we pointed it out for the airport's clarification. Can I, can I bring that up?
Please. Okay, yeah, this is the copy of the, that second copy we've got with the...
There's no markings anywhere.
With the original, this is definitely marked.
We only have one copy. That's what's in our files, and when we print it off, we were confused when we got it as well. We said, "What do you mean? It's overpowered." Because they were, you guys were referencing that number, but we pulled the sheet up, and I said, "That's the clutch we use." So that's why we provided the clarification.
Could I get that original one back? This is what, this is what came in the bid package. So that's the one that came in the bid, bid package, definitely marked. This was the one that, there, a copy of that one, where it's been marked there.
That's, that's like a computer marking, right? I mean, that's not a human...
What it looks to me like. I mean, that's, you got a really steady hand, so...
Right, and this is the only thing we have. It's not like we can take it off the sheet. So, but regardless of how that happens, we clarified to you that that's what we did, and Eaton clarified it as well, Cascade Engines.
So I'm going to ask you to go back over there so the people at home can see you.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we ever, in any of our bid processes for anything, whether airport or anything else, have people submit things with maybe a typographical error or something that we then notice and they're able to clarify it? Or does that, does that kind of an error automatically make it so that we have to declare it unresponsive? Or can you, is there any kind of leeway legally through our bid process that we can say, "Okay, that was a mistake. They don't know how that got there"?
So there's two types of errors, like you mentioned, typographical and substantial. And in this case, the engineers determine, and staff has agreed, that this is a substantial difference between what was originally submitted and what was submitted after, after the bid was not originally awarded. So I would consider this, at least our perspective on it, as, as a substantial difference between what was asked for in the specifications and what was submitted. Now, the question that's coming up tonight is whether it was an error or some other inadvertent box around a transmission that doesn't work. When we looked at and evaluated the bid, we said that transmission that they've selected, and that as a result, I would assume the transmission selected has an impact on the price, saying, "No, that, that transmission won't work, therefore, we can't accept that product."
Were you in the bid opening? I'm going to ask you, tax you on your memory.
I don't believe I was. I think that the original memo with the September 6th agenda item was written by an attorney in my office, so I'm guessing that he was the one that attended that opening.
Madam Clerk, were you there?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember by chance seeing any of this?
We, they don't...
Or do you get that deep into it?
They don't go through that during the bid opening. Only give the dollar amounts, and then they take that back and review it to make sure that all the things are met. And that, so no, sorry, I didn't view it.
Okay. Okay.
But I can say that the bids were not opened. They're held in my office, sealed. We mark them as they come in. We put a date, a time, an initial, and I hold them myself, and I carry those into the bid opening, and they are never tampered with, and they are not available to be tampered with. That much I can say.
Good.
So what was in that package is what they reviewed.
Do you have anything else for us?
I don't, other than, I mean, if, if, if we're rejected, then we have to protest because it's our business, right? If one, if one of these happens, then we're out of business in no time at all, because then it's used as a precedent to be set. So we protest it. We do it multiple times a year, and it gets, it gets tied up for a long time, and the FAA is, is very good at supporting us on this because they have, when we're using federal funds, they want to make sure there's fair and open competition.
Sure.
And they've upheld it, and it's, you know, just, it is a risk, and I don't want to be in an antagonistic position. Very uncomfortable for me. It's why I'm going to have a little bit of anxiety here tonight. I'm a friendly person. We're a friendly company. We hate when these kind of things start out like this. But that's why we have federal guidelines for procurement, and if you're thrown out on something like that, that's a misunderstanding, or, I mean, we've clarified it, that's why you have this procedure of protest, showing follow-up documentation. It's not like we're just changing our bid, "Hey, you know, we actually meant to add $50,000 to our bid because we were really low bid. We give a fair product for a fair price, and we support it really well, and we're an hour away." I really don't see any reason why. And if you look at every, every bid procedure to answer one of those previous questions, I'm sure your documentation says you can ask for clarification, because they all, like, I would say, I actually don't know a bid that we've seen in the last 10 years that hasn't had a spot where it gives the airport or the city council a right to ask follow-up questions for clarification. So I'm sure if you look at the documentation, we'll probably say that.
Okay.
And I know that's one of the things allowed under the FAA procurement.
Is there a substantial price difference between the transmissions and clutches that are listed?
No. It's probably about $400 on a 500-plus thousand dollar piece of equipment. We always give that trans, those other transmissions, the clutches, we've never used them. We only use this transmission and that clutch.
I know that, that you're assuming we have...
Pardon?
You're assuming we have knowledge of your procedure, where we're asking you to present everything to us. And if I go down to buy a car, and I think I'm getting one car, and I get something with other stuff in it, that's not what I agree to. So we're kind of locked in, I think, to what we received and what we responded to. To, to change an item is substantial in my mind, even if, even if it is what your procedure allowed, it's still what we receive.
With all due respect, I understand that, but we didn't change an item. That's what we only bid all of the time. And also, your bid doesn't ask for every single item on the snow blower to be presented. It asks for certain documentations. It didn't say, "Please point out which clutch on that, on that cut sheet you're going to use." It didn't ask for that. It asked which clutch you're going to use, which transmission you're going to use, which engines you're going to use to meet that requirement, and we provided it. And you didn't ask for clarification on that in the bid, if you go back and check.
So we didn't ask for a clutch, and we didn't ask for a transmission?
No, you didn't ask, you just said, "Present your drivetrain." You didn't say, you didn't, in fact, I'm pretty sure it doesn't even say transmission, because most people just use a gearbox. Gearboxes are cheaper. This is significantly a better drivetrain component than a gearbox. We have gearboxes too, but on airports, it's like a fire engine. When you have snow, you've got to get rid of it.
That's getting in the technical...
Yeah, okay, that's right.
I think what we're trying to do is make a decision based on what we receive.
They acknowledged the higher transmission right there.
It's just the same thing. Like, in your letter to us, he's, what he's saying is that you acknowledged the 2,250 foot-pounds of torque in the original rejection letter, but it's, it's just pretty much the same thing I'm saying. We've always provided the 2,250 foot-pound torque one, because that's what, that's what we provide. So, anyway, it's your decision to make, and then we just will respond accordingly. And if we go down that road, I don't want any, I have no antagonism, it's just, it's just the process we have to go through. But I hope you can understand that. With that clarification, we never intended to give a 1,860 foot-pound torque clutch, never, ever have provided one. From our knowledge, that was never, ever bid. It was always that same one that is our standard transmission. And then you guys have to decide, I guess.
How do you figure that mark got put on there?
I have no idea. We don't have a cut sheet with those boxes in our possession, so I don't know how it got on there. Because the cut sheet that I provided was the one, when we got, we got the rejection letter back, we went to our files, printed off our cut sheet, like, "Why are you guys determining..." Because when you sent the protest back, you didn't send us a copy of that thing with the boxes. You just said you rejected it, and we provided clarification why, why, why you were wrong. But just now's the first time I ever saw that with a box on it. You know, Madam... You know, Madam mentioned that after it's opened, none of the technical stuff's looked at, it goes back and then it gets evaluated sometime later. No idea, but we do not have that document in our possession.
Mr. Mayor, based on the information that's been provided tonight, one option council has is to not actually make a motion and vote on this protest at this time. I think it would be prudent for staff to be able to go back, look at the original bid documents and do some further evaluation, but that's just a suggestion, council can proceed how they want.
Do you, do you need a motion to that effect, Mr. Mayor?
Probably, right? Or what do we need to do with that?
You could, you could motion to delay the decision until further evaluation is, is had, if you so choose. If, if council feels like they have enough information tonight to proceed, then by all means, but I think it might be prudent to allow staff a little bit more time with this based on some information that's been presented tonight.
Can I ask one additional question of our engineer?
Sure.
So, these guys are saying that we did not ask for the specific clutch or transmission, but we asked for the drivetrain. Is that...
So, Nathan, if you'd come up here?
So, typically, when we ask for the components, that means that you indicate what model you're gonna provide with the transmission, not just the manufacturer. So, when we look at them, you, you get this engine, it's this model, this transmission, it's this model. You know, this clutch is this model. It's not just a cut sheet that has six different options. Typically, it's indicated which one they're gonna provide. I do have an electronic of the bid, it was page 109 of 119 pages that that came from, so if anyone wants to see it, then we also have our copies.
So if the mysterious box had not been present and it was just the sheet, would that have automatically prompted you to reject?
No.
Or would you have at that point clarified and they would've sent you and all would've been well?
Correct. Well, we would've, we would've evaluated what they sent.
As a follow-up?
Yes.
Kinda being the devil's advocate for the other company...
Yep.
They gave you all the specs, they tracked.
Correct.
They were detailed in there. I'll make the motion. I, I, I think that we delay a decision on this until we've had ample time to do another review on it and bring it, and bring it back to the council. So I make that motion.
One second.
Okay, what do, okay, I just wanted some clarification. We have a motion to delay the decision for further investigation. What are we investigating further?
Just staff the process, Mr. Mayor.
Go back and recheck the bids. Dig out the originals and...
So we dig out the originals and you see a box on the original. I mean, I, I guess I really am, I'm okay with this, but what exactly are we looking for?
I'd like to know.
What do we want staff to look?
Let the red box go?
Yeah, I'd like to...
If that happened within our organization some way, somebody's head ought to go.
Okay. Don't think I'll remove anybody's head for sure, but, but we'll...
No, I mean, this is a big deal.
It is a big...
And if this man's telling us the truth, which I believe he is, then something happened in our procedure and I'm very concerned about that.
Or something happened in their procedure.
Yeah, in their procedure.
It's a possibility on both sides.
Yeah.
And Mayor, the next step would be, after the box is, is looked at and evaluated, like Nathan said, that, that kind of, I don't wanna say it ended the evaluation, but then the next step would be, okay, assuming that wasn't there, how would we evaluate that, that bid? And would it become a responsive bidder at that point? I think that's an important step to take as well.
It would appear to me that it would be a responsive bid and $100,000 is starting to add up to real money.
And one of the things I would like to do is look at it to see if it would be a responsive bid and, and look at it compared to the industry standard of not specifying exactly which on those, on those cut sheets. Because, because one company did specify exactly the transmission and exactly the clutch for both components and this company is saying they never do that and maybe that's an industry standard and maybe it's not. I think that's another thing that could be looked at if council decides to delay this.
Was your company favored by the night powers?
I have a question, I have a question for Nathan, then if... I just know winter's coming. When we get these bids and stuff like that, are they typically marked or are they typically not marked?
Typically marked. I will tell you, snow removal procurement over the last probably 10 years has been, you know, sadly, a very involved process on all, looking at all of the components. You know, we've been part of many of these where all bids end up being rejected. Several bidders are rejected because they didn't submit all the information. It's become really a very tedious process to evaluate the bids and look at all the different components and make sure everyone meets the specifications.
How many bids did we have for this?
We had five.
Five?
Correct.
How many did not mark any spec, any of the specs?
I, I don't have that information in front of me. You know, we really do the thorough review, starting from the bottom up because it takes so much time. So, you know, say like the top two or three bidders, we, we do a cursory review of their bid, but if they're not, you know, in the running for award, we're not gonna go into detail on everything. But the majority of them will, you know, specify the major components, what the make and model is.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So we have a motion to...
Delay.
Delay this so we can do further investigation. We have a little bit of clarification of what that investigation is gonna look like and what we wanna find out from that. Is there any other discussion, council?
Yeah, we didn't put in that somebody's head should go.
No, no, that, that did not go in the motion.
I would draw my request.
Okay, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Did we get a second?
We did. Oh, I'm sorry, a motion by Bray and a second by Manon.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that either. I kinda mumbled.
She's quiet down there, but I got it.
It's been a long day. Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Okay, super. We will be in touch with you when the final decision is gonna be made so that you can be present if you'd like to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number eight. Piggyback bid sanitation collection trucks. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of sanitation department staff to piggyback the National Joint Powers Alliance Sourcewell for the purchase of two new residential side-load collection trucks scheduled for replacement in fiscal year 2019. A, award the bid to National Joint Powers Alliance Sourcewell for two 2019 Peterbilt 320 cap chassis and Lambra auto automizer packet, packer body at $287,664 each for total price of 200 and, or $575,292. And if awarded, B, authorize the mayor to sign and execute the purchase agreement subject to legal department review. Funds for the purchase are available in fiscal year 2019 sanitation department budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the sanitation collection truck purchases in the crisis specified there and authorize you to sign and execute the purchase agreement subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Councilman Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, bid agreement curbside recycling program, Western Recycling. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding a commingled recycling materials collected from the city's curbside recycling program. A, accept a bid received on November 7, 2018 from Western Recycling who submitted the only bid. Bid price is based on fair market value per ton less commodity credit. Items produced, items processed at Western Recycling, $156.14. Items processed out-of-state MRF, $168.40. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the execution of the agreement between the city of Pocatello and Western Recycling with costs and outline, costs as outlined, subject to legal department review. The increase in costs for processing curbside recycling is available in the sanitation department's fiscal year 2019 budget. The current rate study ends September 30, 2019. During the, the rate development, additional costs may be needed to be built into the rates for future use, years. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this bid agreement for curbside recycling program, accepting the bids that are there and authorize the execution of the agreement between the city of Pocatello and Western Recycling and make that subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. I think he got you first.
If she really wants it, I would...
Well, we don't have her on the, yeah, we've got her on the list, we're good. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, an ordinance. An ordinance enacting a new section of Pocatello Municipal Code 10, Chapter 8, Section 270, distracted driving, prohibiting the use of mobile electronic devices while driving, establishes, establishing penalties and allowing law enforcement officers to stop vehicles for violations. Council, this ordinance is before you, how do you wish... What am I reading here? Yeah, how do you have the ordinance read? Councilwoman Adamson.
I move that the ordinance, agenda item 10, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello and municipal corporation of Idaho revising Title 10 vehicles and traffic of the Pocatello Municipal Code, more particularly by adding Chapter 8, Section 270, distracted driving, prohibiting the use of mobile electronic devices while driving, establishing penalties, allowing law enforcement officers of the city of Pocatello to stop vehicles for violations, providing that all other sections of Title 10 not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 11, a resolution establishing fines for violation of City Code 10.08.270. Council may wish to adopt a resolution identifying specific fines and penalties for violations of City Code 10.08.270, except for the specific situations as set forth in said select, section.
Mr. Mayor?
Lurick?
I move that we approve the resolution establishing fines for violation of City Code 10.08.270. And that's all.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Manon. She was very excited about making that, I can see that. So, thank you for that second. Connie, could you please call the roll?
We're in the learning process.
The learning process.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 11, discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear, oh, I'm sorry, 12, we just did 11. Item number 12 is discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussions not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item and three minutes per person. We have one person, Idaho Lorax.
I am Idaho Lorax and I want to congratulate you for that incentive to stop people from talking on the phones and making it's very dangerous out there for those who see it a lot. And so I commend you on that. It's a great move for this community. I'm here mainly to declare my candidacy for city council. And I give you an option. Brian, since Brian picked two people in the past and others, I was going to let Brian get to roll the dice, basically see one, two, three, which would be one, two, three, or four, five, six. So do you wanna do the honors?
I am not gonna roll the dice.
Brian, you always pick a lot of people for the city council anyway.
Well, you understand if he gets that and it's several years before they're up.
That's right. That's right.
Just give him the option to roll the dice, otherwise I'm just gonna roll the dice.
I'm not gonna roll that dice.
It gets loaded?
I don't know what it is.
Actually, it's one of my props, so if you don't mind, I'll just roll the dice and one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, you changed the numbers?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six?
Double chances.
Yeah, one dice, two chances. It's number six, Mr. Roger Bray.
Roger, wow.
So anyways, thank you again for that ordinance.